The entire cabinet is behind me here, not only to help answer questions, but this is a reflection, not of my work, but of our work as a team. And I could not be more proud of this incredible team and what we've worked together on. Okay, so a little bit about tonight's agenda for my 30 minutes, and I am absolutely going to try to stick to my 30 minutes. I'm going to just talk really briefly about our funding challenges. Not that our Board of Education isn't fully aware of our funding challenges, but also for our public that is watching to understand the context of this recommendation. Give you a summary of our staff recommendation and then the details around our recommendation for a mill levy override, a bond. We have potential ballot language for discussion and then next steps and question and answer time. So just to start with our funding challenges, it always comes down to our kids. That's what it comes down to. I know for all seven of you, that's what it comes down to for all of us, is our kids and what we want for our kids. We want to make sure that our district continues to be a destination district, that it is an amazing place to work and go to school, that will attract companies to come, move into Douglas County in order to have their families be able to access our schools, that will attract teachers from across the country and from across the state to come and work in our amazing district. We want to make sure that our kids have incredible pathways to success as they leave our system, whether it's college, career, service pathways, or as President Peterson talks about, life skills. And making sure that we are working with local industry here in Douglas County to create a pipeline for the amazing businesses that we have here. And to make sure that each and every one of our schools is a point of pride in our community. That's what we all want for our kids. So a quick overview of how we are funded. We are funded through both local property taxes and state equalization funds, which comes from income tax and sales tax. The state legislature determines our funding level every year, consider that our bucket size. Our bucket is first filled with what we raise here locally through our local property taxes, and then the state fills in the difference. So when we experience prosperity in Douglas County through higher assessed values, more homeowners, more businesses, et cetera, and we're collecting more property taxes locally, we simply receive less from the state. So our state share decreases and our bucket size remains the same. The one thing that changes that dynamic is a mill levy override. The State School Finance Act allows each school district, in the spirit of local control, to be able to raise an additional 25% so to increase their bucket size by 25% through a locally approved mill levy override. And over the years, our neighbors have put a lot of locally approved mill levy overrides in place, more than we have. And so this has increased the funding gap between Douglas County School District and our neighbors. The funding gap is through the mill levy override. This chart shows you local share and state share of surrounding districts per student. So you can see in Douglas County, we don't have an overwhelming amount of local share. We currently raise about $3,600, if I'm seeing that correctly, through our local share per student. So that's what our property taxes raise and then the state fills in the rest at about $5,500. And you can see from other districts that balance is different. The main reason it's different in Denver and Boulder County, for example, is that they have so much more commercial taxes than we do here. The gray is the mill levy override. This is the differentiator. This is where local control comes into play. And you can see the difference between us and Cherry Creek School District, for example, in terms of our mill levy overrides is 1951 per student. Our student count in '21-'22 was 63,878. So that is a very, very big gap, and that's why we cannot pay our teachers competitively. And in fact, this is our salaries from '21-'22, average teacher salary. Douglas County School District now sits at the bottom of the metro area at 57,919 on average. And again, where we lose teachers to tends to be Cherry Creek because it is right across the border from us. And their average teacher salary falls in at $76,000. This is a huge challenge. This is just math, local control, and markets. And it isn't just our teachers, of course. We're losing other positions. We're not competitive in other positions as well, starting with educational assistance. Even with all of these changes that we were able to make going into this school year, our EA1s are still starting at $13.62 an hour versus Chick-fil-A or Starbucks or really anywhere else, if you look around. Bus drivers, also in administration, principals, assistant principals. It's all throughout our district. Every position is not competitive. Why can't our district just cut administrative costs? I get this question all the time. You can see here that most of our money goes to salary and benefits. 85% in fact go to salary and benefits. If you take that salary and benefits piece and break it out by what's going to our staff versus school-based administrators versus central-based administrators. School-based administrators make up 4% of our salary and benefits. And central-based administrators, including myself and all the amazing people standing behind me here, make up 1% of our salary and benefits. And just as an example, our human resources department has 23 professionals to serve the needs of our 8,500 employees, which is one human resources professional for every 370 employees. Industry standard is 1 to 50. And our other districts, our neighbors, are somewhere in the range of 1 to 100 or 1 to 250. So we are operating incredibly lean from an administrative standpoint. We're stretched very, very thin because of that almost $2,000 difference in local mill levy override from our neighbors. On the bond side, the School Finance Act contemplated that we, Douglas County, our community, we are responsible for building and maintaining our own schools in the way that we build and maintain our own libraries, for example. And that happens through our district, engaging in bond elections with our community. From 1984 to 2006, we passed a bond approximately every three and a half years to build all of the amazing schools that we have throughout our county and to be able to maintain them and invest in building up the school district. That 12 years has been talked about by our FOC and our MBOC really put us behind in terms of maintenance. So as a community, it is our responsibility locally. This is not something the state can come in and do. This is us locally. It is our responsibility to take care of and maintain our buildings and to continue to address growth in our district. We are responsible for a total of 111 buildings. And those capital needs cost $30 to $35 million, according to the latest master capital plan, each year to maintain 111 buildings. And the last time we built a neighborhood school was in 2010. Okay, so what is staff's overall recommendation going to be? I decided to put the punchline at the front and then to just go through the details. Staff will be recommending a $60 million mill levy override for competitive compensation. This would equate to about $943 a student. So I don't want to imply that a $60 million mill levy override is suddenly going to give us Cherry Creek's salaries. There are $1,900 a student ahead of us. But $943 per student will really help overcome that gap about halfway and make a huge difference in terms of our ability to be competitive because we can be more efficient and we are more efficient in so many other ways, including administration, as I pointed out. We are also recommending a $450 million bond to meet the capital needs of this district. We need to build and expand existing neighborhood schools. We have so many areas of growth in our county, and unfortunately, we can't pick schools up and move them around wherever it suits us. We need to be able to provide neighborhood schools for our new and enormously expanding communities, along with addressing the ongoing capital needs for our district. Our district's master capital plan, put together by the Long Range Planning Committee, estimates that our district's capital needs will be between $800 and $920 million over the next five years. Again, 111 buildings. We have an enormous capital infrastructure. So $450 million will be tremendously helpful. But again, I do not want to imply it's a magic wand that's going to get us all the way there, but it will absolutely help us be able to accommodate growth and be able to meet our critical capital needs. What is the overall impact on our taxpayers? So in real dollar terms, if both the bond and the mill levy override were to pass in November, the impact on taxpayers is $1 per week, per $100,000 of assessed values based on assessed valuations right now. Because our mill levy override is a fixed-dollar amount, as our county continues to grow and as assessed values will grow, this dollar amount impact on taxpayers will actually decrease because we're not talking about passing a mil amount. We're talking about passing a dollar amount. So the more homeowners that are paying that fixed-dollar amount, the lesser of an impact it will be on each homeowner. So unlike a lot of the other taxes in our county, when assessed values grow, which they are going to do because we're going to see reassessment happen in January, when those assessed values grow, that's a big impact for taxes that are based on number of mills. And so for us, for our mill levy override, for example, because it's a fixed-dollar amount, that increase in assessed valuation won't negatively impact what taxpayers are paying for the mill levy override. Okay, so going into details. On the mill levy override, our staff recommendation is really, really simple. It is all about paying our people competitively. Paying our people competitively, retaining and attracting the best talent for our kids will impact every area of this district. Every educational program, every school, every student will be positively impacted by our ability to retain and attract amazing staff. The mill levy override would be invested into district-wide compensation, more competitive so that we can hold on to our valuable teachers and staff. Every single teacher, every single staff member in the district, based on tonight's presentation, knows exactly what a mill levy override would mean to their individual compensation. So there's not a lot of room for, gosh, what if they spend it differently or whatever? It's all going into compensation and it's all very specific. Now, of course, we share 100% of our mill levy overrides with our Douglas County School District charter schools, who will be spending it on the same thing, which is competitive compensation. So the charter allocation of that $60 million would be $15.5 million. Again, it's $943 per student following the student. The district allocation would be $44.5 million. As I go through specific compensation changes, I want to be sure it's really clear that when I'm talking about specific compensation changes, I'm talking about the district allocation. Each of our charter schools are communicating with their communities and with their staff what competitive compensation through this mill levy override would look like for their individual schools so they won't have the same salary schedules or the same percentages that we do. So I want to make sure I'm really clear about that. And again, the taxpayer impact of a $60 million MLO is that $1 per week, per $100,000 in home value. The bond is actually not an impact based on the current number of mills that we're collecting for our bond. So the entire impact is in the MLO. So that's $1 per week, per $100,000. So a homeowner with a half a million-dollar home, this impact would be $5 a week or $255 a year. A homeowner with a million-dollar home would have a $10 a week impact or $510 per year. And then, of course, for our commercial property owners, that amount is times four. Okay, so our specific district compensation changes. So again, this is not pertaining to charter schools. This pertains to our district. Every district employee will know exactly what their increase is. We will make those increases retroactive to July 1st. So we will not have the challenge of having to put mill levy override money into our fund balance from that first year. So the first year's dollars will be spent down because we will make the salary changes retroactive to the beginning of the year. For our, right now, our current salaries and benefits, 70% of our salaries and benefits goes to licensed staff and 30% goes to the rest of our support staff, the rest of our staff. So we've allocated the mill levy override in the same way. So about 70% of the mill levy override will go to our licensed staff and about 30% to our non-licensed staff to total our district's share. On the licensed side, we've actually published salary schedules so that our teachers can see what the salary schedules will be if a mill levy override passes. We did not get fancy. We didn't change the salary schedules as in extending the steps or stretching the lanes or changing years or anything like that. It is exactly the salary schedules that were passed for this year just moved up in terms of amounts. So picture that the whole thing just moved up. Every cell is higher than it was before. So every teacher will still land in the same cell that they landed in for this school year. They'll land in that same cell but with the new dollar amount. So they can look at those revised salary schedules. Those are posted on the electronic school board along with, behind that link of the final presentation. The link does actually work on the final presentation. So for example, a teacher that is on step four with a bachelor's degree will go from 46,364 or 54 to 51,915. Teacher on step 10 with a master's degree would go from 59,311 to 66,427. So that just gives you a couple of examples, but every teacher will be able to find their cell. We were able to revise the starting salaries about 10 to 12%. So that also helps our ability to attract. We're not quite at the $50,000 starting salary that Jefferson County just announced, but we would be really close at 48,921, which is almost $49,000. And so that also will help us on the hiring side. Individuals that are over their new cell would receive a one-time pay of 3%. That's para-inclusive. But it is worth noting that this change would put 92% of our licensed staff on the schedule. So the folks that were still above their cell, a lot of them will now be, will receive an adjustment to get on their cell. So, and we'll continue to work on future enhancements as we've implemented our salary schedules. There have been a lot of questions from our staff, a lot of questions about credits and steps and lanes. We will continue to work on enhancements and improvements as we look to the '23-'24 school year. The purpose of this was just a real simple move up. All right, so that is our licensed staff. For our non-licensed staff, the average salary increase for our non-licensed staff will be 8% and it varies by employee group. So our classified employees would receive a 9% raise flat. Again, we're not doing any calibrating with this. We are just being as simple as we possibly can. So 9% for our classified staff. So the highest percentages are going to licensed and to classified. But our administrators would receive an increase as well, as well as our pro tech folks. We're dying competitively across the board. We're struggling to hire our executive director of special education, for example, because we can't pay enough. We know that principals and assistant principals matter a lot. Leadership in our school matters. When you overturn a principal every couple of years for competitive pay reasons, that's really hard on a school. So every employee in this district matters. And they all play an important role. And not a single one of them is even remotely competitive with everyone else. So that goes for our IT staff. That goes for people who are working in human resources, again, throughout our school. So professional, technical, and administrators receive a lower percentage at 6%, but still receive something. All of the ranges will shift accordingly and all of the people will shift. So if you think of our entire non-licensed compensation as like a bulletin board that has the ranges and then all the people as pins, just like the license schedule, the whole thing just moves up. So the ranges will adjust accordingly and all the people will adjust accordingly. And again, we will work on calibration. As we did last year, we will work on calibration going into July of 2024. So what does the timeline look like if the MLO does pass? In January 2023, we would give each employee a lump sum, that is, that retroactive piece of their increase. And then in February 2023, their new payment would start at that point and continue along. And again, our licensed staff will be on the same cell they're currently on. The whole schedule will have moved up. And then they'll continue to get steps every single year, as the plan was. I should have mentioned that the increases for licensed not only increases everyone, but also makes the schedule sustainable. So we built into the mill levy override that sustainability piece so that we can continue to sustain our licensed schedule going forward. And that's a challenge that a lot of our competitors are facing as they've been finalizing their schedules for the year. A lot of them are now going to be struggling with sustainability. So we do, we have built in that sustainability piece so that we're not eating into fund balance every single year based on just the regular course of our schedule. Okay, so what does this make my comparison chart look like if we do indeed pass an MLO? So you can see us off on the right in the lighter colors with the big circle. That's what we would look like compared to our neighbors if we do indeed pass the MLO. So it puts us in a much better position. We're still not going to be at the top, right? We'll still be, but listen, we would love to have our average teacher salary be competitive, somewhere in the middle, so that we can continue to attract and retain employees because we have fantastic families. We have a fantastic school district. And this is a great place to work. So we just need to make it a little bit more competitive. All right, on the bond side. So as both Jim and John mentioned, and thank you to both of them for all their hard work and for being willing to meet with me before I put forward this recommendation because I wanted to make sure that we were meeting their transparency desires and lessons learned from the 2018 bond as we look at a 2022 bond. What we have published on the electronic school board is indeed an actual bond plan that lists the specific projects that the 2022 bond would cover and differentiates between what's an estimate or an allowance and what's a list of specific projects. And I'm grateful to both of them for their consultation in that regard. These slides are simply a summary of that bond plan. The bond would be an investment in new schools, capital maintenance of existing buildings, and safety and security upgrades, just as a summary. The new construction for growth areas would come in at $216 million. Now, one of the points that the FOC brought up was that idea of how do we spend, make sure that we're able to spend that $450 million in the time period in which we have to spend it. And a lot of the biggest reason is the new construction projects. They're not, you know, onesie-twosie little spends here and there. It's a very big allocation that goes towards building in new buildings. So those new construction for growth areas, student programming and investments at $54.5 million, safety and security upgrades at $15.5 million, capital maintenance and renewal at $139 million, and bond fees management contingency at $25 million. I would like to mention that I did update these charts at noon today. We found a couple of typos. So make sure you're looking at the final presentation for our public out there. The taxpayer impact of that $450 million bond would be a $0 impact because the mills would remain the same as they are today. But to be completely transparent, I'm not going to call it a no-tax increase. It is a $0 impact on the number of mills. But should we not pass a bond, the taxpayers would see a very slight decrease. So that decrease is 19 cents a week per $100,000 in assessed value or about $10 a year per that $100,000 in assessed value. And on the new construction side, we would ask for $170 million for three new neighborhood schools, Sterling Ranch, Crystal Valley, and the Canyons. I've been asked a number of times if this means charter schools. This does not mean charter schools. This means new neighborhood schools in Sterling Ranch, Crystal Valley, and the Canyons, where the master capital plan actually calls for neighborhood schools in five areas in the next five years. We can't possibly ask our taxpayers for five. So we picked the three that are going to be the most on fire. And then an expansion of Sierra and Mesa Middle Schools, both. Expanding both of those will help us to not have to build new elementary schools in those two feeder areas. By adding sixth grade to Sierra and Mesa, that increases capacity in all of the elementary schools in those areas. Student programming investments. So this just breaks down student programming investments. Athletics and activities upgrades at $7.7 million. This means replacing tracks and fields that are outdated. It's a huge benefit to, not only to all of our kids that use our facilities, but also to our community. I will confess that my children learned how to ride their bikes on Rock Canyon's track. And so it's just a great asset to our entire community to make sure that we have good athletics and activities. It also includes upgrading some of our auditoriums. And when I say upgrade, I do not mean anything fancy. I mean making sure that we replace the broken seats and all of those kinds of things. Career and technical education additions come in at $23.5 million. That is primarily Phase 2 for the legacy campus to allow us to move forward with advanced manufacturing, aviation, certified nursing assistant program, the EMT program, and the other great programs that we have, advanced robotics, the other programs that we have planned for the legacy campus. It also includes career and technical education additions at Highlands Ranch High School to expand Highlands Ranch High School to have an automotive program. We have an automotive program today at Douglas County High School and at Ponderosa, but we do not have anything on the west side of our district. Special education-specific programming at $5 million. So this expands opportunities for our students with special educational needs in terms of center-based programming, center-based programming, in terms of career and technical education opportunities, making sure that those are accessible. And so that's $5 million. I do have a note at the bottom that our total investment in special education is $10.2 million, which includes the $5 million above, as well as $4.7 million in buses that are specific for our students with special needs, ADA and special education upgrades to our buildings and to our playgrounds. So this is a small part of the special education, but this is the student programming piece. And then information technology at $18.3. This is a refresh of our technology as needed across the district. So we have to, of course, replace our student computers and our staff computers every four years. This is not part of our district budget. It was cut out years ago when we were trying to make sure that we were as skinny as possible. So this would be that technology refresh. Safety and security upgrades. So making sure that we have the latest and greatest in security equipment. We're always continuing to update our building security. We are always looking at the latest recommendations that we have so as we continue to learn and evolve and identify our needs. So security equipment, the latest and greatest in radio communication, and then building upgrades along security. And then finally, capital maintenance and renewal. District educational facilities, capital maintenance, those projects are specified in the bond plan. There are several pieces to that bond plan, but one includes a listing of capital projects in our district educational facilities, and then another list for our charter school facilities that comes in at $7 million. We will be upgrading our LED lights district-wide for $2 million. The upgrades that we have been able to make have saved us a tremendous amount of money, both in energy as well as in replacement, the replacement cost and the labor of replacement. Those code and safety upgrades to include ADA and special education adaptations, district facilities, capital maintenance allowance, and transportation. So making sure that we're continuing to replace our school buses. We have lots and lots of school buses that still have well over 300,000 miles on them, and we need to make sure that we are replacing our school buses. And then finally, we have our draft ballot language. I have bolded the important pieces of the draft ballot language. So for the MLO, $60 million MLO, to retain and attract quality teachers and staff by increasing district salaries to be more competitive with neighboring school districts. We have also, as I mentioned, spoken to our charter schools about this language. They are obligated to follow this language as well in their use of MLO dollars, and they're incredibly supportive. They are having the same struggles that we are with competitive pay. And then it was also mentioned in the previous presentations that there was a prior mill cap that we have to address. So that's addressed by the second bulleted, by the second part, and shall the district collect property tax revenue previously approved by the voters, notwithstanding any mill levy limitation. And then on 5B, I've got a whole bunch of highlights in here. You can see the $450 million, but with no expected increase in the district's current bond mill levy rate based on the district's current assessed value and tax collection rate. So this is a piece that's transparent about this wouldn't be an increase in the current mill levy rate. And in terms of the feedback provided by both Jim and John, as well as, of course, their committees, we've been very specific in the language to include that fourth bullet says other capital improvements as described in the district's published bond plan. So what I have provided on the electronic school board is our bond plan. Our communications department has built a beautiful document that will be what's put on our website in terms of that bond plan so that it's really set in stone that this is what we're going to do. From a transparency standpoint, that plan would then be published on our website along with the process for reallocation. So if the projects have to be switched around over time based on changing circumstances and priorities, we just need to be incredibly transparent about that on our website, and that is our plan, along with for the Board of Education as well as for the Oversight Committee. It does still have the sentence in there that John Freeman called out in his presentation. It's the very first sentence of the last paragraph, and for acquiring, constructing, or improving any capital assets that the district is authorized by law to own. So that is kind of that flexibility sentence. However, those first four bullets really lock us into what that bond plan is. And then this is just the rest of 5B, which is pretty boilerplate. Lastly, I'd like to have individual departments just really briefly come up and tell you what this means for their part of the world, because this bond and mill levy override will mean a lot for our district, for our students, and for our staff. And so I've got my fantastic cabinet behind me here, ready to come talk. So Danny, why don't you come share a couple sentences about what this will mean for our schools?
Well, the challenge is a couple sentences. I think more than anything, and one, Ms. Kane, thank you so much for making the time. Really appreciate, obviously, the stops to work on this. Thank you for your feedback as well. When I think about the bond and mill, when I think about it as a dad, I'll be quite honest with you, I wake up every single morning thinking about how can I be at my best? When I look at my kids, I look at the same lens with our kids in Douglas County schools. And something has just resonated in my head, and this goes back to 2018 when we passed a bond and mill. And honestly, the excitement I've not felt for probably 20 years, because it was one of those things in this district, we just had not passed one for a number of years. And I thought about just something that kept resonating in my head, and it was thinking about what is the most precious resource we have in Douglas County? And it's our kids. They are our future. And so when you look at the language, and I think some of this stuff, I can struggle with a little bit in this, we can look at numbers without faces. And to be quite honest with you, when I think about 64,000 kids, I don't think about the number. We each had an opportunity to be able to walk into schools this, you know, today, yesterday as well. And I think something that I think about on a regular basis is not about the masses of kids, but when a kid wakes up, what's their individual story? As a former counselor for a number of years that is there, I've had an opportunity to sit down with countless students, talking about their futures, talking about what they feel inadequate in, things they feel strength that they have in. And I've also sat in conversations with kids that say, you see this passion and energy that comes out of them. And they talk about what they want to do, what they want to become, things they're proud of themselves in. I'm not sure if you remember that conversation with your kiddos as well, but there's no greater feeling when a kid feels confident and they believe in themselves. I've also had a chance to sit, seeing that same kid that is there that has talked about programming and things that could allow them to explore their passion. And I've had to be the bearer of news, saying, hey, you know what? We can't offer that. This bond and mill is not just about a dollar amount. It's about the most precious resource we have in this district, and that's each and every kid and their story that comes through this. So my challenge to us as we look at this work, this work can't just be about $255 on average in this community. It has to be about how we intentionally invest in each and every one of our students, their stories, their passions, so they have the opportunity to be something they've always dreamt to become. That's the commitment we think about. When we passed our bond in 2018, we were in a place as a district that we couldn't offer pathways and opportunities for kids. I remember those conversations as an advisor and assistant principal at Legend High School. And I got to tell you, that was an awful feeling at times when we couldn't offer that. But when I had a chance to sit down with our nine high school principals and our alternative ed leaders when we passed that bond, and we talked about possibility of what we could do for kids, between 2018 to current state, we saw the greatest growth in concurrent enrollment in CT ever in this district, ever, and saved families an additional $2 million so they can have an opportunity for kids to explore their passion with intentionality. The decision of this work is not a random decision. It's about the kid who's standing right there in front of us to say, am I going to invest in you or not? That requires us to invest in our teachers, our staff to do those things. I can tell you, in my current job that I sit right now, I've spoken to Bill Fordice, Rich Cosgrove, Zach Nanistet, all these other folks working behind the scenes to keep our schools open, they deserve to be invested into. And I think that's something that I would challenge us to think about. My list goes on and on. But the reality that's there, when I wake up and I go talk to my Charlie who's seven years old, and I want to provide him the world of opportunity that's there, he's in this district. That's what each of our kids are about. That is what we need to provide for them. So when I look at this work, absolutely, we have incredibly deserving departments that do this work. But to be quite honest with you, our most precious resource that we have in this county, not just this district, this county, are students and our staff to do this work.
Deputy Superintendent Hyatt, you've got a high bar.
Well, Danny, Mr. Windsor is known for sharing a whole lot of passion and a whole lot of words and a lot of great, great sentiments that we all believe in. He represented that really, really well. So thank you for that this evening. When I think about what this passage will mean for our district, I really go straight back to what our mission and our vision is as an organization. And that really is helping all of our students reach, providing them the foundation to reach their individual potential and giving them the skills to achieve whatever their endeavor is going to be after they are done with their experience in Douglas County School District. So when I think about student support services, I feel very honored and humbled to be able to represent this critical aspect of our organization, because student support services are all of the wraparound supports that we provide for our students to help them to be successful within this organization. It's all of our prevention efforts from our nursing staff, our health and wellness teams, our counseling teams, which we were truly privileged to have the 2018 mill support the addition of the counselors in our schools. All of our student support services and our prevention teams are doing critically important work to help our students reach their individual potential, and that is so important. And then I think about all of the other aspects that we wrap around the support of our students. You heard it tonight from Superintendent Kane, safety and security. We have delved deeply into those conversations that are very ongoing in terms of what we need to do to continue to enhance the safety and security measures within our district to keep abreast of the current technologies. And this bond would allow us to continue to do so in a manner that, again, holds our responsibility to keeping our students safe in our schools. And that's critical in the work that we do every day. I think about our early childhood educators and the work they do with our youngest learners to get them ready for their K-12 experience. That's part of our student support services, is part of the wraparound that we provide our kids and prepares them. And it's critical that we invest in those people that make a difference for our kids at the earliest, earliest stages. Today, I had the opportunity to visit our four bridge program sites. Today was their first day of school. And so I went to all four sites today and had a chance to connect with our educators, our educational assistants in those programs, our kids. Our kids do benefit, our kids with disabilities benefit from all of the other bond projects that are on the table. I was at Douglas County High School today, and in our south campus building, they had new carpet. Like, that is a really big deal if you've been to the south campus. And it improved the learning environments for our bridge program kids, because the noise level in the school environment came way down. It's those kinds of things that do make a difference in the lives of our kids. It helps them to reach their individual potential. Our advanced academics, our gifted programming, our educators are our asset in this organization. We pride ourselves in having remarkable educators and remarkable leaders. In order to be able to maintain that, we have to continue to invest in them and retain them, because they make the difference for our kids, as Superintendent Kane said, every single day. When I had a chance to look at the TLCC survey results from last spring, one of the questions on that survey was, which of the following most affects your decision about whether to continue working at this school? Salary, of course, is a part of it, but leadership was actually the number-one response by our practitioners in the field. Leadership makes a difference. And so that investment in leadership is critically important, as well as all of our educators. So thank you for an opportunity. I, like Mr. Windsor, could go on and on in sharing different stories, but I hope that you understand, I know you understand, because you are all very much representing the critical work that we are doing in our organization to help our kids reach their potential. And student support services, special education programming, and all of the plans that we have to enhance programming options for our students with disabilities because of a bond and a mill is going to make a difference for them. And so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share.
Matt Reynolds.
Well, thank you. They did tell me to keep this brief, which is not hard for me. The beauty about following those two is they're very passionate, and they like to talk a whole lot. So it's wonderful for me, because they hit a lot of the things that I wanted to talk about. Also, following up with the presentation, there's a lot of data, a lot of information on that presentation, which I'll not touch on. So I want to go a little bit different direction. I have the pleasure of supporting Learning Services, which is one of the few departments that has learning right in the name of it, which, as Danny just spoke about, since 2018, you talk about the expansion of career and technical education. It's just one example of the possibilities when you have an infusion of an MLO and bond of what you can do. And our students are directly being positively impacted by that infusion. This next proposal is a very similar type idea, where you have an influx where you're able to provide and enhance the learning experience. And we all know, and we've talked about it in here at nauseam, that if you want to be able to really enhance that learning experience, we know we have to recruit, we have to hire, and we have to retain the best staff. And I think everyone will shake their heads yes to that. But I want to put a human face to this. You all get communication from our community, including from our staff, who have to make that tough decision about whether to stay or whether to go. And as Danelle just touched on, one of those factors is salary. I and my colleagues experience this all the time with our own staff, where they're faced with challenges. When they can go across the county line and they can increase their salary by 20%, 30%, they have to make that difficult decision. And that's a very, very hard decision, because we do live in a wonderful community. We have great students, we have great schools. And that's a very, very difficult decision that our staff is faced with every single year. We have this differentiation in pay. And you all, I'm sure, get tons of those emails of, you know, help me try to figure out a way to solve this issue. And over the last few years, we've dedicated a lot of time and energy to try to fix the salary, along with the resolutions that you all passed and your priorities. And in order for us to truly live and actually act on those resolutions, we do need an MLO to be able to recruit, hire, and retain our staff. You know, we often talk about teachers, but you also have the support staff, who are critical in our organization to help our students reach their full potential, and that's not lost in this proposal. So that's just one thing I wanted to leave you with. I know my colleagues will have more to share, and I will be sharing data very soon.
It's an honor to speak to you all and, again, share further information on the importance of why we need the mill and bond. From a specific mill perspective, we are continuing to work on our pay schedules. So, for example, from a licensed perspective, what a great celebration to have our three schedules in that as a district, as an entire community, we all worked so hard on. As soon as we implemented it July 1, other districts, through sustained funding, raised their starting pay, and all of the friends around us have higher starting pay than we do. And so, again, we want to be able to do the same thing, we need to be able to do the same thing, in order to keep our teachers and attract our teachers and bring back our teachers. I've had conversations on a regular basis with staff, particularly some teachers lately that said, gosh, I still have to go get another job. I've got to find another way. I don't want to leave here, but I just can't make ends meet. We have young teachers that are living in their parents' basements still, and we thank them for their dedication to our district and our kids. When you look at our candidate pools, the teacher shortage is real on a nationwide level. Just with CDE data alone, there's a really neat dashboard where it can show you the education completer data, those exiting out of and graduating, becoming new teachers and special service providers. One example is in math. We have less than 100 math teachers that are produced brand-new in this last year. That's not even one teacher per district, and we want all of them here in Douglas County. And so we have to continue to remain, or become more competitive. Another example with our nonlicensed staff, we have postings that are up in a lot of our departments where we either don't have any applicants, or we have very few that unfortunately are, you know, we aren't able to select from. And so we are posting them in many, many, many places, nationwide places, local, and our pay is just not competitive enough. It breaks my heart to see that we have our classified staff that could go, as Superintendent Kane shared, to one of our local restaurants and earn more money. We have got to be paying our individuals more, and for example, our special education paras, our educational assistants, our bus drivers, our TEAs, and our custodial staff. We couldn't do this without them. And so thank you for the opportunity, and, you know, we are committed to continuing this great work, and I look forward to seeing what could happen with this possibility.
CTO Mark Blair.
Thank you for the opportunity. So I, like my colleagues, have an incredibly lean staff to support all the IT infrastructure throughout the district and 60,000 devices throughout the district. Our salaries are very, very challenging to maintain competitiveness with industry. So the MLO will make a significant increase in that and help us to retain staff and to hire new staff for those opportunities, especially in some of the lucrative positions like network engineers, cybersecurity, software engineers. We're losing people, and we just can't get them hired back. It's incredibly difficult. As Superintendent Kane mentioned, the bond will absolutely help us refresh our technology devices. Technology changes, as we all know, on a very regular basis, and it's very fast. And trying to stay up with that for our students to give them the best opportunities for all the different learning opportunities we have throughout the district can be very, very challenging. learning opportunities we have throughout the district can be very, very challenging. So we try and do our best and stretch it as far as we can, but those bond dollars will be very significant for us. So thank you.
COO Rich Cosgrove.
Good evening, directors. Thanks so much for the opportunity to explain our perspective and operations. First, I want to state again, operations is absolutely committed to and passionate about providing safe transportation and safe and healthy learning environments for our students. We like operating in the shadows, but that's becoming extremely difficult over time. We currently have 41 vacant custodial building engineer positions. That's out of 80 schools. Over half do not have a full-time custodial staff lead or building engineer. We have 103 vacancies in transportation. Over 60 of those are drivers. We've had to eliminate permanently two routes this year in Castle Rock and just in Highland Ranch. We've consolidated routes to the point where we've eliminated over 20 bus stops since last year. We are trying the best we can. Our students with special needs transportation continues to increase. We continually rely on third-party carriers to do that and an increased cost, because we can't have the drivers in-house. And it's becoming problematic for families. We're not able to provide field trips unless it's after hours or on weekends, because we're performing routes during the day in such a tiered structure that drivers literally go from one route to another. On our capital needs, we have over 850 rooftop units, over 50 elevators, and on almost any given day, there's an alarm that goes off. Our operations and maintenance staff are responding. In general, we keep the schools hot and cold when we need them. And I'm saying probably to the 99% level. That's because we are always responding. Thanks to the last bond, we've been able to not lose ground, but our master capital plan has up to 222 million just in capital renewal for our neighborhood magnet alternative and support facilities. These needs are critical and will enable us to continue to provide safe and healthy learning environments. But these are the critical needs. They absolutely need to be done. Otherwise, we will have schools with no heat or no cooling in the summer, or leaky roofs, or backed-up sewer lines. And we're facing one of those right now. We are responding, but it's increasingly challenging. We also have growth in certain areas where we can't re-boundary our way out of anymore. We have Sterling Ranch. We have the Canyons and Crystal Valley. And those two additions to middle schools will not only increase programming at those schools by bringing sixth grade into those middle schools, but also assist us with the capacity and all of those elementaries in those feeders. If we don't provide those schools, we will have a void, and those parents are going to have to drive, or we're going to have to try to transport them, which will be increasingly difficult. So the mil is essential for us to hire and retain staff, and the bond is essential to address our most urgent needs. Thanks for the opportunity.
And interim CFO, Ms. Schleisner.
Let's talk about summer. So we have a before and after-school program that has a fantastic and amazing summer program that really keeps our kids engaged through those summer times. The staff this year, we've had a hard time retaining and recruiting new staff for those. We have had to cap those programs, which we haven't had to do before, and haven't been able to serve those kids or our families like we would like to. And the staff that has been in those programs, we are working them a lot of hours and a lot of kids to entertain in those summer hours. So this mil would really help pay and get those staff where we need them to be for our kids and families. Thanks.
And before I jump to questions, I just would like to change to share a personal story. I've shown a lot of tarts and done a lot of numbers. My youngest graduated from one of our comprehensive high schools. And when she went into high school, she had the incredible opportunity to go into a biotechnology program in her comprehensive high school. It was incredibly inspiring for her. She had the opportunity to work with CRISPR technology. The the technology and programming that they had was absolutely amazing. She was working with researchers from the University of Virginia. They were splicing DNA. It was incredible. And she just finished her freshman year in college in bioengineering as a girl. A really, really amazing, and we're really proud of her. But it is the amazing educators, the former biologists, that came into this district and are teaching those kids and inspiring them every single day that made it happen. We can have all the cool programming in the world, but we have to have the humans that deliver that programming. And our teachers and staff are just like us. They're putting kids through college. They're raising families. They're trying to figure out how to make it all sort out. And when someone comes along and offers them $20,000 a year, and you're putting someone through college, how do you say no to that? We have to put them in a position where they can say no. And that's what we are asking for tonight. All right. Whoops. I think I have another slide. I thought I did. There we go. Next steps. So August 23, we would come to you with election resolutions for you to consider for a $60 million mil levy override and a $450 million bond. We would also have intergovernmental agreements with Albert County Clerk and Recorder and Douglas County Clerk and Recorder. And we would also recommend that you extend the charter for the bond for the MBOC upon a successful, if the election is successful. Once you all vote on the resolutions, of course, the Fair Campaign Practices Act kicks in once the vote is taken, and we are fully prepared to communicate with our staff and make sure that everyone understands the rules around that. With those next steps, and I appreciate, I think I went over my 30 minutes, but I'm really grateful that, so I used some of John's time and some of Jim's time, because they were fast. But thank you so much for your attention during all of that. And I'm happy, we are happy to address any questions you might have.